Thank you everyone for joining us today. I was hoping I wouldn't have to say these words, but welcome to this virtual meeting of the Raleigh City Council. This is our work session and I'm going to ask staff to start our presentations.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. I'm Eric Lamb. I am with the city's transportation department. We're here today to talk about sort of the northeastern corner of the city's jurisdiction. We are referring to work around the Buffalo Road corridor, which has been an area of interest with a lot of citizens, but also talking about it from a more regional perspective. Here with me today is Shelby Powell. She is the Deputy Director of the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, also known as CAMPO. And CAMPO has recently completed a regional study that includes a portion of the city's jurisdiction in the Northeast, but includes a significant portion of Eastern Wake County and Franklin County. So turn over to Shelby.
Thank you, Eric. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having us on your agenda today. Oh, I'm not quite as tall as Eric is. Thanks for having us on your agenda today. As Eric mentioned, I'm going to go over our Northeast area study. So this is referring to the northeastern planning section for the Capital Area MPO. If you kind of think of US 1 going north and US 64/ I-87 going east, it's the pie piece in between there, starting kind of with the outer edges of Raleigh and moving into the Northeast. So it includes Franklin County and several of their municipalities, as well as Wake Forest, Roseville, Knightdale, Windo, and Zebulon, as well as, like I said, a little slice of Raleigh. So just a couple of things I'm going to cover for you in this presentation today. An overview of kind of the evolution of this project, and a summary of the outreach we recently conducted earlier this spring, an overview of our materials, and then the request for your endorsement of the findings in the study. So this project started back in February of 2020, and we did existing conditions and had a public engagement touch point last summer. We also had a second phase that was analyzing our data and our capacity deficiencies and things like that, and we met with stakeholder and technical team members and worked on some land use scenario planning. This whole effort is in order to inform our 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which is the region's 30-year transportation plan. So this is really our deep dive into our northeastern planning area to help inform what goes into that plan for this area. So we're currently finishing up our last bit of public engagement for this, and we are bringing the recommendations and priorities out to all the participating local governments right now. So during our last engagement period, which did occur during COVID pandemic restrictions, so we had a, what I thought was a pretty cool virtual meeting space. It was a virtual tent that was set up, so it was set up just like if you were going to an in-person open house, you would walk into the tent in a virtual fashion and kind of go on a virtual tour around the tent and be able to click on maps and click on surveys and leave feedback regarding various things. We had comment cards, and we even had a couple of events where we had an ability to connect live with some of the planners from the planning team. We had that open for a three-week period in February and March, and we had over 1,000 total visitors, 725 unique visitors captured in our web data. And this graph at the bottom, you can kind of see the ebb and flow of visits to the open house over time. We found that when our participating committee members helped to publicize that this was happening, we had little bumps in engagement. So we appreciated the help there in getting the word out about this engagement opportunity. So what we heard from that survey during that open house and public engagement event was there was a lot of priority on fixing what we already have, so widening existing roadways or making intersections work better for us in favor of doing that versus constructing a lot of new roadways. Now, when you get into the fact that this is still a rapidly growing area, as I think our census numbers pointed to earlier this week, there are still some new roadway recommendations in the study, but a lot of kind of maintenance fixing what we have, making it work better for us. And we also heard a lot, which I know the city has also heard a lot, of interest in bicycle and pedestrian improvements, as well as transit improvements as well. So, excuse me, we took the things we heard from the public during this event, and then we kind of filtered that through our Metropolitan Transportation Plan financial capacity exercise, and also looked at our future deficiencies to sort of figure out what the priorities would be for this study area. A few resources that have come out of this study, these are all online. You can see at the bottom of the screen there the link on the CAMPO website. There's also a project-specific website called NEASupdate.com, and you can get to these directly from that website. So we have our public engagement summary, which will be filled in at the end of this whole process to make sure we're including all of these presentations that we're doing currently. We also have the project workbook, which includes the recommendations. And we also have what is called our policy guidebook, which takes a look at policy recommendations that will help our jurisdictions be able to implement the recommendations. So quickly diving into what's covered in our project workbook here, we have our context setting, which is going over, you know, the study area and what we heard from that first round of engagement. We have our planning framework, which is where we talk about the vision for the area, a lot of concerns that our staff members and the communities had when we went and did some outreach early in the study. Then we get into Chapter 3, which is called our Regional Snapshot, which is basically the existing conditions analysis, looking at our human and natural environment and our growth areas within the study area. Then we moved into Scenario Planning, which is where we did some kind of what-if-ing, what if we grew this way, what if we grew that way, and working towards what we called our Blended Scenario, which was the preferred scenario, to protect a lot of the environmentally sensitive areas in the study area while kind of trying to compact some of the growth to the more municipal town centers. This study also got into what we called hotspots and concept designs. We did quite a few of these, and this is just a couple of examples. This was one for US 1 at Stadium Drive. For the area in Wake Forest that's part of the freeway project for US 1, the town of Wake Forest was interested in seeing if it was feasible to plug an additional interchange into that project. It would not be done as part of that project, but we wanted to make sure the project was not precluding that happening in the future, so we came up with some options for that, and that's here on your screen. And again, these are all in the materials that are on the website. We did a similar exercise on US 64 business in Knightdale. If you've driven on US 64, you know it's a busy highway, a lot of commercial property along it, so we were looking at opportunities for making some connections off the main corridor, mainly for pedestrians and bikes, but also making it safer to cross that corridor on bike or on foot. So overall, we had 358 projects identified. You can see a lot of those were road widening projects. We also had, like I said, some new location projects, a lot of minor connections, kind of making the roads function better out there by creating some ability to connect those roads in a more direct fashion. Some of the key projects that were in the Raleigh area are the Buffalo Road interchange at 540. We updated that to match the City of Raleigh Street Plan as far as cross-section, and we're also looking at making sure to accommodate the interchange improvements at 540. Some access management on US 401. There's currently a project at Mitchell Mill in 401 to do what's called a continuous flow intersection, and we looked at doing something similar a little further north on 401 to kind of maintain mobility in that corridor with some access management techniques. The Skycrest Drive extension, which has been on the books for quite a while, that was also included in this study. We also included a new roadway project on Thornton Road to extend to Ligon Mill Road. Again, this was incorporating some recommendations from the Raleigh Street Plan. We looked at Auburn, Knightdale, and Hodge Road, which I know was being studied as part of the city's Southeast area study, so we worked with that team to be able to come up with a recommendation for that that will work with the new 540 alignment going through there. And finally, a grade separation at Perry Creek in US 401 was recommended in this update. So we took all of those recommendations and kind of looked at where we would get the biggest bang for our buck, based on current capacity deficiencies, development and growth happening in the area, and funding available. And you can see the map on the right here highlights the green projects are the sort of what are recommended for more near-term investments, and then the blue are the midterm and the yellow are the longer-term recommendations. Moving on to our transit section, a lot of the Raleigh area is covered under Wake Transit, all of the Raleigh area is covered under Wake Transit. So a lot of the transit priority recommendations were a little more geared towards connecting some of those outlying areas into the overall Wake Transit system. We did incorporate the micro-mobility study that Wake County has been doing in their northeastern area of the county to be able to incorporate that as a recommendation, and I believe they're moving forward with implementing that. So there were a few other circulator routes recommended here, and eventually extending some of the BRT concepts out to Knightdale and Wake Forest in the future. Our bicycle and pedestrian recommendations are visible here. We divided them into four different types of recommendations: on-road, off-road, and then what we called a complete street urban, which was really reframing how a current street facility works in order to accommodate bicycle and pedestrian traffic. A lot of these projects that you can see listed here, we worked with the city on, and we're also still working to incorporate the new Greenway Master Plan into our 2050 MTP since it wasn't quite done in time to incorporate into these recommendations. So again, we went through a prioritization exercise for these project recommendations, and we heard over and over and over and over again that people want to be able to walk and bike safely, both within their community and between communities. So that's what we really tried to hit with these recommendations in this regional study. And again, all of the workbook and the policy guide and everything is on our website. We've had a public comment period open since July. Our executive board is expected to take action on this in September, and at which time we would expect them to incorporate some of these study findings into our 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And I am not Brandon Watson, but he was our project manager for the study and is available at the email address and phone number below if you have any more specific questions. And then I think Eric is going to go through some additional Raleigh recommendations. Does anybody have any questions before we carry on?
Got to get used to the virtual again. I couldn't get to my grid. Councilmember Cox, you have a question?
Yes, it was hard to tell from Slide 16 if Capitol Boulevard is in orange or yellow and indicating long-term. And I was wondering how that relates to the plans for converting US-1 into a freeway.
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite understand the first part of your question. I heard you say Slide 15?
Slide 16.
Oh, 16?
Yes, the priority.
Is this Slide 16? I think it's the highway priority. Are you looking for the highway priorities, Matt?
Yes.
Okay. This one on the screen is the bicycle and pedestrian. So this one, roadway priorities?
That's not the roadway priorities. Those are just the recommendations.
This one?
That one.
Okay. And how does this tie into?
It seems to... Yes, US-1 is supposed to be converted to a freeway. And I was wondering, because this indicates that US-1 is, the plan for it is long-term.
Being there, this map is easier to see if you zoom into it in some of the materials. The freeway project for US-1 up to Wake Forest is a funded project and it's in the near-term. Some of these longer-term things that you see on here are, number one, the US-1 project in Franklin County, which is not currently funded. And you may be familiar, the traffic in Franklin County is a lot lower than the traffic currently in the Wake County section of US-1. And there are also some more connection-type frontage and backage roads that are intended to connect future development in Wake Forest that are alongside US-1. So that might be what you're seeing there in the yellow.
Okay, all right. Another question I have is regarding this planning. One thing that's important to my district is the kinds of frontage applied to various roadways. For example, 401 has a parkway frontage planned for it. And I was wondering if these plans take into account, you know, those kinds of visions for the future where 401 would have extensive trees and vegetation along the roadway?
This doesn't get into that level of detail necessarily. That's more of a project development-type decision. This study at this large kind of regional context is more interested in the connections and the mobility along the corridors. There are cross-section recommendations in here, but as far as what it looks like alongside or even what a planted median may look like, that would come at a later project development phase of the project.
Okay. All right, thank you. The planted medians are also important. You know, as you know, on Capitol Boulevard, we don't really have any planted medians. And planted medians do make a tremendous difference. And, but thank you for this information.
Okay, thank you. Were there any other questions?
Okay, if we could take down the slide, I'll be able to see if there's any other questions. Any additional questions? Councilmember Bufkin?
Thank you, Mayor. So when I think about this part of our region, one of the most exciting opportunities I see is the future for the S-line rail corridor. And I saw that in the presentations, in the presentation slides. And I was just wondering, and I know there's a lot of work going on, most of it outside of the city right now, but just wondering if you had any ideas that we could do to help speed that along. I just think that project is so important to help move people through the northern part of the city. It'll provide, I believe, a lot of relief to traffic congestion in North Raleigh. And I'm incredibly excited about the opportunity for that, anything we can do to move that along quicker.
Not as part of this study. The recommendation is included in this study. Campo is a big supporter of that project. We've been working with NCDOT on moving that project forward, you know, for years and years, as has the city. I think there's some opportunity with the Transit Oriented Development Study that is about to begin at different station areas along the corridor. That will get into some elements of protecting land along the corridor and making other kind of modal access to those station areas a priority. And you'll be able to do some things that will make it easier to implement some of those recommendations. Of course, the city staff will be very involved in that work that NCDOT is doing. But this study certainly does recognize the priority of that S-line corridor as part of the recommendations of this and in our long-range transportation plan for the MPO.
So I have a follow-up question to that. When you look at the S-line, are you, does this plan include connections, potential future connections to that? I saw, you know, we had transit service in Zebulon and other places lined up. How is that all going to connect and is that part of this?
So that is, that's thought about as a kind of a high-level recommendation. Obviously, you can't draw bus lines on a map that you expect to be put in place, you know, 20 years in the future. That's just not feasible. So again, as that project development happens, and again, as the station area stuff starts happening here in the near-term, that's a real opportunity to think about connecting bus lines, frequent bus network into those commuter rail-type stations and making sure the whole system functions effectively. We're about to start, well, Go Triangle is overseeing this Bus Plan Update that's looking at the future bus network. And I imagine, and we've included in that study an access-to-transit element, which is going to look at bicycle and pedestrian gaps in our existing bus network and access to stations. And so some of that work will transition to station area work as well.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any additional questions? Okay, thank you very much for the presentation today.
All right, thank you.
So, Mayor, in my part of the presentation, one is that you have an item that's on your consent agenda for your 1 o'clock meeting. That would be to provide an endorsement to the Campo Northeast Area Study. City Council doesn't normally take action during work sessions, so we provided you with an action item in your consent agenda item in the meeting at 1 o'clock. Second, I want to share that if you're not familiar with the relationship between the -- it's quite a virtuous cycle. We receive information from the MPO about areas of concern, growth areas, and then by the -- with additional information about development trends, the city's comprehensive plan, the future land use map, and our plans for the transportation system. So it's a continuous exchange of information, looking at current data. That's what feeds into the development of these types of plans and our strategies for how do we move forward with addressing the capital needs of a growing area like this. If you can go ahead and pull up the presentation, please, roll through that. So it's not an understatement to say that there's a lot of folks that are really interested in the Buffalo Road area. For years, we've referred to this as the undiscovered country, primarily contiguous available land, raw land, and underdeveloped land available for development and redevelopment. So it's something that, for example, for those of you that have been here for a long time, if you look at this area through the lens of what North Raleigh looked like 30 years ago, this -- that we're talking about here, minus the constraints of what portions of North Raleigh have with watersheds. So it's a key distinction. And it's something that will evolve as the area grows and will require different levels of -- as things proceed. So, but this is an area we've heard from, from the public, as we've done prior public outreach, asking for feedback on areas that need to be considered for transportation improvements. We've heard before from the -- some of the existing traffic concerns in the corridor. So we're going to talk about some of the near-term and long-term issues and talk about some opportunities that may present themselves, as well as recent development activity. This is for information. There's no action that's requested from the city council today. So first, I want to just get you oriented. So Buffalo Road is the thick green line here in the middle. That is the primary east-west axis here. I-540 is the major characteristic of a major highway facility that provides access to this area. But then there are feeder streets here that are part of the surface system, most notably -- its connectivity, north and south, and then Old Milburne and Old Cruz as we go further to the east. The thing that's interesting about this area is that it does buffer. You can see the area in the tan to the left is the City of Raleigh's jurisdiction, and this represents our ETJ -- of Nightdale, once you're past Old Milburne Road. The south side of the road is entirely within the Town of Nightdale's jurisdiction, so the city has no control over land use decisions or whatnot associated with that side of the world. And then once you go to the northeast, it's actually all in the county. Now, that area is part of what's referred to as the long-range -- the expectation long-term that there would be some expansion of the city's -- takes place, but that is not currently in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. And so the interchange between Buffalo Road and 540 is one of the few major access points serving this area. The only other major access point in the immediate vicinity is the intersection or the interchange at 401 and 540. And so part of the characteristic for this area is when the 401 corridor is saturated with traffic, a lot of that traffic from the development to the northeast looks to use Forestville Road and these are the feeder roads to access the Belt Line as an alternative route. But beyond that, we don't have a lot of access points. And one of the challenges of a street network is that the fewer streets that you have, fewer major streets that you have, those streets tend to be larger. It's just a function of grid. We always talk about the grid is good, but when your grid is limited, the streets that you have tend to be larger than what you would -- later in the presentation. One of the other interesting characteristics about this area is the land use projections. And so again, looking at it from the City of Raleigh standpoint, this is the current future land use map that's included in the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. And probably the most striking characteristic of this is the overwhelming provisions for -- a challenge from a transportation standpoint, obviously, from the public standpoint, that's highly desirable as a land use outcome. And obviously, we're in a situation that requires the need for additional housing. The challenge of this type of homogeneity is that it ends up creating few opportunities for accessing commercial and household needs. So there is an area of concentration around the 540 interchange that's been designated for commercial. You can see the 5401 project over to the northwest here. But other than that, there's not any designations for commercial land uses in this immediate area. And what that means from a transportation standpoint is that folks that want to access resources in the grocery store have to get in their car and drive longer distances. And so that induces a higher amount of what we refer to as vehicle miles traveled. And so certainly, when you have commercial districts, those commercial districts can have localized congestion associated with their activity. But at the same time, having more of those districts starts to spread things out and that people don't have to travel as far to get those types of things. So I will point out that there was a recent zoning case on the northeast corner of the Buffalo Road and 540 that did, in the future land use map, allow for some level of commercial development. But there was neighborhood objection of that, and the developer opted to scale back the case to be exclusively residential. So it's got a short-term benefit from a level-of-service traffic impact standpoint, but some long-term ramifications -- for love. So we have a number of approved development cases in the area. The city utilizes forecasting tools from the Institute of Transportation Engineers to look at, based on those types of land uses, how many trips will those new uses generate? And so the approved development totals a little over what we forecast to be about 8,000 new trips that are going to be added to the system out here. There's several pending cases and pending things that are in the progress. The largest one out here is the Rivertown subdivision. And that in and of itself would generate over 10,000 trips. And again, one of the challenges with the homogeneity of the development network being exclusively residential is there's less opportunity for what we refer to as trip capture. So having those trips to interact at the more local level instead of having to make those long-distance trips becomes a little bit of a handicap. But again, so between the two of these, we're talking about with just the development that's on our doorstep right now with recently approved development and pending development adding about 25,000 additional trips into the system. And you can sort of see the distribution of that. While some of that is concentrated around the Buffalo and 540 interchange, in fact, again, large area of undeveloped and underdeveloped land, it's going to be attractive as there's increasing development pressure across the city. And so you can see that that development activity is spread out over the area. So I want to talk a little bit about what the traffic volumes are in this area. Right now, the 540 is obviously doing the heavy lifting with over 70,000 vehicles per day. But the Buffalo Road corridor, right now between 540 and Forestville Road, carries about 19,000 cars a day. And I'll refer you to a section of the Comprehensive Plan that lays out some guidelines for bandwidth of what different types of roads can carry. So right now, we would consider that section between Buffalo and Forestville, which is currently two lanes over capacity, because the average capacity ranges between, say, 10,000 to 15,000 for a two-lane road in ideal conditions. But you can sort of see the spread. And obviously, as you get further into the east, it drops off pretty dramatically, given the lack of intensive development to the east. But as I pointed out before, you know, this is the Rivertown development. That's going to generate about 10,000 trips per day. So you can see what that fits into relative to the existing street plans out here and the existing volumes. The city is a planned city in terms of having future cross-sections and prescriptions for each one of our major streets. And the Comprehensive Plan spells out whether a street is planned to be a freeway, six-lane avenue, four-lane avenue, two-lane divided avenue slash three-lanes, two-lanes, et cetera. And that forecasting is based on working with the MPO to look at future travel demand and looking at the cross-sections of streets and those numbers we were talking about in terms of what an average street size can handle and rectifying that against what the Campo predictions for traffic volumes are. So one of the challenges here is that for the section of Buffalo Road between 540 and Old Milburne, we're looking at the need from a forecast perspective of needing six lanes of traffic out there. So it's pretty significant as far as what our growth projections are. For example, as we look at areas around the city, historically, we've used a rule of thumb of about 3% annual inflation for trips. Now, again, we're going to have to revisit a lot of these assumptions based on what the post-COVID landscape looks like in terms of what we see from travel demand and new patterns and what the new normal is going to be after that. But based on our previous planning, this is where we're at with regards to that. The good news is that, from the city's standpoint, we do a lot of work with the development community. The city has what was known as exaction authority. So we have the ability to require new development to build out its street frontages to meet the city's prescriptions that are included in the Comprehensive Plan. So for example, this is the portion here I mentioned that is prescribed to be a six-lane street within the Comprehensive Plan. What that means is as the development along these frontages is built out, each of these developments is required to build to match that six-lane requirement. So some of that is eligible for compensation from our development facility fees. So there's some offset of costs associated with that. But again, it's a little bit piecemeal, but it's a way for us to be able to bite off some of this a little bit at a time as each development comes online. And then conceivably, when we get to a point that we've reached a critical mass, there would be some type of public project that would come in and knit the remainder of these sections together through a single project. And again, as I mentioned, the North Raleigh example before, that's exactly how North Raleigh was built out to what it is today. So one of the big challenges with this area specifically is the I-540 interchange. So a lot of the planning that took place for the outer loop from I-40 in northwest Raleigh all the way to what used to be US-64 bypass, which is now I-87, a lot of that planning took place in the mid to late 1990s. And so using travel demand forecasting at that time, there were projections made for what was needed for each interchange. And so the challenge that we have right now is that the traffic volume today at the I-540 And so the challenge that we have right now is that the traffic volume today at the I-540 interchange exceeds what was in those design projections when 540 was built. And so that puts us in a position of having to play catch-up as it relates to either public projects or development-related exactions to mitigate traffic. So Campo, not as part of this update, but as part of the previous iteration of the Northeast Area Study, had identified Buffalo Road interchange with 540 as a hotspot and done some evaluations and verified that we would need to look at an interchange expansion here, both for capacity and functionality. We'll be looking at using a divergent diamond as our strategy, most likely, and I'll talk about that a little more in a second. As I mentioned before, we worked with the NPO to look at ways on funding projects. This type of project for doing an interchange modification on interstate typically would not fall to the City of Raleigh from a funding perspective. This would be more in line with what we would expect to see NC DOT fund, through a mix of state and federal funds, that these types of projects would be eligible for. NC DOT has a legislative mandate to look at tiering projects through their strategic prioritization process, which is known as SPOT. There's a statewide, regional, and division slash local tier, and the projects on the interstate system would qualify for the statewide tier, which puts it pretty far in line, but it's also a fairly competitive pot. So in our discussions with Campo, this project is close to the top of the eligible list but has not crossed over into funding eligibility for the TIP, the State's Transportation Improvement Program. So if things were to all come together, with the wind at our back and everything aligning perfectly, the earliest we could possibly see some type of implementation for a project like this for just the interchange today is 2030. So that is a best-case scenario for what we're looking at. That does not prohibit us from looking at some interim modifications, working with private developments, look at restriping options, look at some additional turn lanes, but not representing a comprehensive rebuild of that interchange. Just to illustrate, you can see here that when the Buffalo Road interchange was constructed, the one really smart thing that NC DOT did as part of this project was to build the new portion of Buffalo Road off of the center from where the previous alignment. So you can see where Buffalo Road was to the north here originally before it was demoed and the new bridge and the overpass was built to the south, but they preserved all of that land. And so with the final interchange, the strategy was that at such point, we would need to come back and construct additional capacity. We already have the land area set aside and the grading ready to go for that, so there's some advanced work that's been done. I mentioned the diverging diamond interchange. We don't currently have any of these in the Triangle area. There are several that are funded and on tap, and, for example, there is one underconstruction now in Raleigh, and that is the Western Boulevard interchange at 440 in southwest Raleigh. And if you're not familiar with these, I'd be happy to talk to you offline about the functionality of these. Basically, the secret to making these types of interchanges work is reducing conflicts with left turns. So each of these traffic signals on each end is a two-phase signal, and traffic crosses over. Through the bridge, it runs, the traffic runs British style across the interchange and then crosses back over, but by doing so, it eliminates a lot of left turns, which are the major source of frustration and conflict for the transportation community. So beyond just the actual corridor itself, I want to highlight some of the other things that are on tap for this area as part of the overall network, and these are the future year, mid and long-term considerations. So as I mentioned before, the Buffalo Road interchange here is the one major source of access, as well as the 401 corridor interchange here. But what we've laid the groundwork for is a series of additional streets in this area that include the extension of Perry Creek Road, which would have an overpass. It would not connect to 540, but would just have a bridge over that would connect into Buffalo Road. Buffalo Road would be realigned in this area to connect to the future planned Spring Forest Road extension, and then there is another street off of the back of 5401 that would also connect in this area, that, again, would also be an overpass. But allowing for this type of grid to expand and connect will actually allow for some alleviation of some of the demand that's put on the 401 corridor, especially for the 5401 community, who, right now, 5401 is a large mixed-use development that has exclusive furniture out to 401, so they're beholden to that. So providing that additional grid and access with the Perry Creek Road extension is going to be a significant benefit out here. The other thing that I mentioned is to the south, and this was alluded to in Shelby's presentation, but that's what's known as the Skycrest Drive extension. And this was actually included in the original EIS for 540, and NC DOT was allowed to go ahead and purchase the right-of-way to build this interchange on 540, just north of, here's Old Milburne Road, here's Buffalo. So this would provide an intervening access point between Buffalo Road and New Bern Avenue that would be very beneficial as, again, much of this area starts to develop. We did a review of this area back in several years ago with the city council and with the town of Knightdale and confirmed everything. Much of the right-of-way for the portion that's west of the Neuse River through the Headinghan neighborhood has already been set aside as part of that development. So it's a fairly substantial extension of Skycrest Drive that will connect to 540 with the new interchange there, and then a connection that leads into Forestville Road and feeds into the town of Knightdale. So again, having all these additional elements of grid really starts to provide some large-scale relief, but a lot of this is going to be further down the pipeline. So I just want to summarize that, again, we're looking at opportunities for furniture improvements and collaboration with the development community as this area continues to grow. The 540 interchange is going to be the critical linchpin to getting some of the existing congestion that's out there today, not to mention the additional traffic that's coming. That facility is probably the most important investment that we have out in this area. We are currently talking to NC DOT about options for that bridge, restriping for additional lanes, looking at additional turn lanes in the context of the development that's pending to see what type of short-term gains we can make outside of a large-scale interchange expansion. But again, as much as the city has grown in other places, we see that same model playing out here, that it'll be a mix of private and public investment and looking at that mix of public funds from NC DOT for some of these major facilities like interchanges and overpasses, and then looking at the city for some of those infrastructure investments on the surface street system. So that is the landscape as we know it currently. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If we could take down the, thank you, Councilmember Knight, then Councilmember Cox.
Thank you. I got just a clarification and then just a comment. Mr. Lamb, on your presentation, slide number six, just want to make sure, you have approved on, meaning that I was just talking to the applicants about Z-5820, I just want to make sure for the record that that has not been approved. Do you?
You broke up very badly here in the council chambers. I don't know if that's on our end or your end. Could not tell what you were referring to.
All right, sorry. Your slide number six, approved development. Z-5820, I just want to clarify, that has not been approved by the city council.
Okay.
Is, I just want to make sure, I mean, I just spoke with them a couple of weeks ago, and that was before us, but it has not been approved by us. I don't know if anybody there can, just make sure that's true, has to make sure I'm not wrong on that. Okay.
We can verify that for you.
Well, thank you. I think it's a great presentation, and I think it's very timely, and I don't want to go forward without missing the opportunity to look at this. You're telling us to and making us think about it maybe a little differently than councils have in the past and folks have in the past. Any development in this area is going to be creating sprawl, right? And the question now is, how do we do our best to reduce the negative consequences of sprawl? And with the way it is planned out now, it is all low residential use. And I think the majority of this council does not want to continue to promote sprawl. So we have an opportunity here to look at this in a way to where we were part of certain things that we have in the past, where there has to be mixed use, there has to be multi-use options in these developments, in these rezones, where you do have an appropriate mix of commercial use, residential use, retail use. So we quit focusing on trying to be efficient in our traffic movement and congestion, but reducing the vehicle miles traveled, that's the key. Congestion is half the battle, but reducing vehicle miles traveled is the real key for all the reasons we know, to reduce all the negative consequences of sprawl. So we have an opportunity to do that here with this plan laid out in front of us, and I look forward to working with staff and the rest of council to do that in the best way forward. We have the tools now, and I think we have the folks in place that want to do this. And I look forward to working with y'all to do it. Thanks.
Councilmember Cox.
Well, I have two questions. First one is related to, I guess it's slide 16, and the improvements to Buffalo Road west of 540. There are some areas on Buffalo Road that are very narrow, two-lane sections, and they get very congested. I was wondering what the plan is for widening those. Are we still taking the same approach, waiting for development to happen along the road in order for those to get widened, or are we at a stage where we should think about using public funding to widen those sections?
That's a good question. Right now, with what's happening in that area inside of 540, there's actually, in the last two months, been a lot of interest in a lot of that vacant land that's involving both the Perry Creek extension and the Sandy Fork, I'm sorry, the Spring Forest Road extension. Ostensibly, if some of that development takes place and some of those facilities are built, it would provide some relief to what is some of the existing congestion on the Buffalo Road corridor south of that area and connecting back to New Hope Road, for example. Most of the furniture of the portion of Buffalo Road inside the 540, with the exception of some of the land that's closest to the 540 interchange, a lot of it has been built out or is probably not likely candidates for redevelopment. For example, there's some large format trailer parks in that area that most likely are not going to redevelop in the short term. So there's probably going to have to be some planning for public expenditures. Again, even if you have a perfect situation where you've got a number of developments that take place out there and start to do some of those furniture improvements, you're still going to need a public project to fill in some of the gaps that always happen in that scenario. We have nothing programmed currently out that way right now. It is identified as part of the city's comprehensive plan to be a four-lane divided avenue, but we don't currently have a schedule or forecast for when that project would be on the ground.
Would you expect that maybe this infrastructure funding coming from the federal government could provide some funding for that?
I would not. NC DOT, because of the way that their financial system is structured through SPOT, it's a competitive process, and it's based primarily on congestion, but that pot, as I mentioned, there's a statewide tier, a regional tier, and a division slash local tier. And this type of project for Buffalo Road inside of 540 would be in that really big pot of need and not a giant pot for funding, which is the local tier. And so more than likely, the expectation would fall to the city for some type of city-funded project to address that.
Okay, so for, so you're saying this section would qualify for SPOT funding, the SPOT program, and I'm wondering, is it currently being considered for that program?
It could qualify for consideration, but I don't think that we have submitted it for funding, no sir.
Okay, could we look into submitting it for funding?
We can, and again, it would probably qualify, but probably would not reach a level of being eligible for funding.
Right, better to be on the list than not. I also want to mention that, in general, I'm in agreement, actually, with Mr. Knight about the sprawl, and I am concerned about it. But one of the things I'm concerned about is that we not only have retail developed in this area, in these areas, but also employment. It doesn't do any good to add high density to these areas, high-density residential to these areas, if everyone has to get on 540 in the morning and go to RTP or downtown to work. 540 in particular is already congested, it certainly was before the pandemic, and I expect it will be in the future. And so we need to think about being able to develop employment centers in this area so that people don't have to drive, get in their cars and drive to far distances every day in order to go to work. So that would be my one caveat about, you know, trying to prevent sprawl. I think it's a great idea. It would be nice to be able to develop higher-density residential here. It's great if they can drive short distances to go to the grocery store or other shopping, but if they have to get in the car and drive long distances to go to work every day, that becomes a problem.
One of the challenges that we've seen is, I'm sorry, go ahead, mayor.
No, go on.
I was going to say, one of the challenges we've seen with getting public acceptance really sometimes is a lack of imagination, if you will, for being able to see what is ostensibly greenfield, looking at what is today farms, and convincing the public of the need to look at higher-intensity, higher-density developments for exactly that purpose. We've had a hard time getting traction with that idea in the past.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everyone that, you know, folks work in retail, too. Like, retail are jobs as well, and those are jobs that are necessary to a lot of families. So I just want to remember that, that mixed use will bring jobs with the retail component. And I also just wanted to plug the work that we're doing in EDI for corner stores. I like this conversation about mitigating sprawl and placing goods and services closer to where people are. I would challenge us to say that we don't want people to be able to get in their cars and drive to what they need. I'd like them to be able to use transit or walk. And so I hope you will all support the corner store initiative as we continue to work on it in EDI next week. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, I just want to reiterate the issue about mixed-use development. Let's learn from our mistakes, and let's not repeat them. So I don't know what next steps might be in that regard, but I think that that's what we need to be looking at, the 30 years down the road, and what kind of community we're creating. There's been a lot of talk about walkable communities, there's a lot of talk about sprawl. I remember when I first got on the council, everybody was anti-sprawl, and then everybody was anti-density. So you can't have it both ways. You've got to be able to plan accordingly, and I'm really grateful, Eric, that y'all have come forward with this today. It was eye-opening. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So that is the end of our work session for today, and we will meet back here at 1:00 for our regular meeting. Thank you very much.